The Burlington School Committee of July 18th, 2023 to order. The public can also access the meeting via the WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video/audio recordings are being made. This meeting is being held in person at the School Committee Room in the BPS Central Office. I'm sorry, is every... Okay. Members of the public are welcome to attend the in-person meeting, and please note that while the option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera, and the comments and statements for public participation are limited to three minutes. The access code for tonight's meeting on WebEx is meeting number three... I'm sorry, start again. 23394810640, and the meeting password is Tuesday. The Burlington Public Schools equity statement is that educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. We would now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will accept a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Do we... And I believe, I just want to check to see if Ms. Masardo is online. Sorry, she is not. Okay. So there's nobody remote, so does that mean we don't have to do roll calls for everything?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The Chair votes aye, and that's 4-0-0. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes of June 26th, 2023. I have a motion?
So moved.
Yep. I second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The Chair votes aye. That's 4-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have public participation, and I just want to remind folks that if you're participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen and verbally identify yourself when you speak. We request that you turn on your camera, and comments and statements are limited to three minutes. There is no one for in-person public participation, but there is somebody with their hand raised. So if you would... Mr. Kuna, who is that?
It's Nikki Cadillac.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cadillac, would you care to join us?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Hi, lovely. I can't see who's in the room, but I did want to just say how excited I am that Dr. Lisa Chen has joined us officially. And I know that one of the reasons that the DEI position had not been posted yet was because Dr. Conti wanted to work with Dr. Chen on that posting, so I was just hoping that we could get an update from the School Committee either today or at the next meeting on when that job is expected to be posted, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and later in the meeting...
Later in the meeting, there is an agenda item for an update on the equity audit which may cover some of that topic. Thank you. Are there any other people remotely who want to participate? No more. Okay. I also wanted to, before we get into our reports and such, I also wanted to, again, welcome Dr. Chen. Your first official meeting, since you officially joined us July 1st. You've already jumped in with all four feet, and it's been really great to have you aboard and working with us because there's so much to do, and you have a lot of energy and positive energy that we really appreciate already. So thank you and welcome again.
Oh, and honestly, the pleasure is all mine. It has just been such a wonderful experience, and I also want to say thank you to Mrs. Cadillac for... Yes, I'm very excited to be joining you folks, and through this entry plan that you guys will hear later on, I am just having this opportunity to learn so much about the culture and the traditions and about areas of growth that we need to go. So it has been a wonderful opportunity, and I can honestly say that everyone I have met, and I want to thank the members of the School Committee and Dr. Conti for this, really this opportunity. I feel so lucky. I really do. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So now, if we would go, we'll go to the reports for any... Are there any subcommittee reports? Ms. Monaco?
No.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Just that the Transportation Committee, we've set up a meeting. So was it the 28th? Is that what you agreed to? I can't remember. We threw so many dates out, but the 28th, the three of us will be getting together.
Great. Okay. Are there other reports? Ms. Monaco?
Just a quick note.
Oh, I'm sorry. Another... Oh, okay.
So the Recreation Commission voted to make July Recreation Month in the town of Burlington. It'll be before the Select Board, I believe, at their next meeting. So urge everyone to get out and participate with the Recreation Department. They're putting on a lot of good programs.
Yep. And actually, Monday night, last night, they helped to sponsor the Girl Scouts Culture Night, which was fabulous. The young women who put that on did a really wonderful job, and there were six or seven different countries and cultures represented, and I got my Henna, my temporary Henna tattoo. So it was really nice to see people out and learning. A lot of little kids were there, so that was great. So are there other subcommittee reports? No. And is there somebody here from Ways and Means who has a report? No. Okay. So other announcements, Ms. Monaco?
Yeah. Last week, I want to take a moment, maybe a moment of silence would be good, for three members of our community, in one way or another, who all left us last week. First, Bill Boudreau, who was part of the Rec Department for a very, very long time, wonderful guy. Sutu Ford, who was part of Scouts, and she's way too young to be gone, and we will all miss her. And Phil Young. I don't know how many of you know Lorraine Sullivan and Phil Young. They put the Burlington High School Art Department on the map. Phil was the chairman of the department. Lorraine was one of the art teachers. They're both artists in their own right now with all kinds of shows, and Phil died very unexpectedly last week, and it's... It was really a tragic situation. So I thought for those three very special people, we might have a moment of silence.
Yes. Thank you for that, Ms. Monaco. Are there any other announcements that people have tonight? Okay. All right. So moving on to learning equity and thriving, I will pass it over to you, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And our first agenda item, we have some policies to continue to work through, and so I just wanted to... The first agenda item is a second reading on policy Section E, which is really about student safety, and there were some options for some school committee choice. And so I just want to go quickly down again through that. I know it's been a couple of weeks, but I think everything was relatively straightforward, and I just want to double-check. So we discussed, again, removing the EBCFA, which was face covering, so we would remove that. And then the EBCG, Policy on Reporting Alleged Abduction Attempts. That was at Burlington only. That was a keeper-delete. Did the committee decide on... That's a EBCG. That's a keeper-delete.
Can we stop?
Yes, I can slow down. I'm sorry.
So EBCG, for those of us who have it up in front of us, this is a... Was a policy that the town had in terms of procedures for alleged abduction attempts, and it's... I don't have a strong feeling, so I'd like to know if anyone else had... It seems that it does duplicate what is done anyway, and Dr. Conti didn't see a need for it specifically, but I would entertain other thoughts and suggestions on that. Ms. Monaco?
Is there a reason to get rid of it?
No. Again, no reason. Honestly, my tendency would be if MASC says it's unnecessary, my sort of idea is to have as few policies as possible, just because it makes them more manageable. But again, it's really school committee choice, and if you want to keep it in, I just want to make sure that it's kept in. But the advice from the School Committees Group is that it's a Burlington-only policy currently, and they said you can keep or delete it. It's really a school committee choice.
I'd like to keep it in there and leave it in there, because recency, there was attempts in Marlborough and Holden. So I think keeping this policy in place over the last few months, keeping this policy in place is probably a smart move, just to have a defined action plan if something like that happens.
Yeah, I agree. Other comments? Ms. Bond? I would just suggest that this one be one that is flagged when we do our full review, after we've approved a full set that's our policy manual.
Yep.
And we begin to review things in an ongoing way. I'd like this to be flagged because it could easily get out of date really quickly. For example, use of phone trees, and I don't even know if that's a thing anymore. So I just wanted to mention that and have that flagged. Okay?
How do you flag it?
We'll make a note on EBCG.
Okay.
Just requires review.
All right. So go ahead.
Then the next one, EC, Buildings and Grounds Management. School Committee Choice. Again, it's only an MASC policy. That is inclusion at your discretion, so EC, you can keep or not keep.
It's Burlington only or MASC?
MASC only, so it's no current Burlington policy. Our Building and Grounds Management is a little bit wonky, so again, I... It is School Committee Choice, but again, given that it's unnecessary, I didn't feel like the need to have it in policy. Or you could go back, and again, none of this work precludes you from adding, deleting, modifying anything, and so again, I don't want to necessarily get too far in the weeds. I'm just going back to where there was a School Committee Choice. I just am asking you to make a choice.
I think this one might not fully comply with what really happens in Burlington.
Right.
So therefore, I think we should take it out.
Yeah. We do... I would support what Ms. Monaco said. We do a very specific procedures and plans that we coordinate with the Rec Department, and so I think it might make sense. And then again, next year, if we feel we wanted to include something that was specific to Burlington, we could do that. So are people comfortable removing this EC file?
Yes.
All right.
Don't know them necessarily comfortable, only because, again, there seems to be not a clear line of delineation on who handles what fields-wise. So I think maybe if we can put some language somewhere else or address that in some way before we remove that, that'd probably be a better option.
Ms. Monaco?
Maybe you could work it out with the Rec Department.
You know what? I go to their meetings every month. I think we can.
So it sounds like there's two ways we could go. We could clarify our functioning policy?
Yeah. Again, Madam Chair, my recommendation is we're not really following this policy now anyway, so I would just get rid of it, but Mr. Brooks is correct. I think some clarification as to is there a 10-foot line, what exactly it is, and any clarity to that over the years, because it tends to be the gentlemen and women who are working at the time sort of understand it, but then over the years, everything doesn't stay the same.
So I'd like to propose that when we vote on this package, that we would remove it, but would also flag it as a priority to establish what our actually policy is, and then we can vote to put it into our policy manual. That's... I'm not allowed to make a motion, but I don't...
As long as we make the motion time-bound, I'm okay with that, as long as the draft within a certain amount of time.
Okay. What timeframe are you interested in?
I'm not a policy writer, so what do you think is prudent?
I'm gonna let Eric give...
I'd say six months is probably the longest.
Yeah, by the end of the calendar year, I think we should probably have that. Would be good.
Replace by the end of the calendar year?
Yep.
In conjunction with the Rec Department?
Yeah.
By clarify. Okay. So that will be part of our vote tonight.
Okay. My recommendation, again, I'm moving on to ECB, which was Building and Grounds Records and Reports, and that was only a Burlington policy that were, again, currently it's out of date, and MASC recommended eliminating, but you all have to determine that.
Wait, I'm sorry. What number?
ECB.
Okay. Can we go back to ECA for a second?
We can.
Okay. Yeah. The reason is, and I'm trying to pull it up here, at the very end, there is a page that has a blank for a name that the... We would indemnify any legal action arises. Is that part of a policy, or is that a form and a procedure that wouldn't go in the policy manual?
I sent that one to Darren, and I'll have to follow up with him. I'm not quite sure yet.
Okay. If it is something that should be in the policy manual, I don't see us putting a person in there but a category, such as, I'm thinking it's often the person in the front office who's letting people in or not letting people in, that kind of thing. So I would recommend that if we keep it, that we have it be a category of person.
Principals designate.
Yeah. Principals designate, and then... And if Darren doesn't think it needs to be part of our policy manual, we should still do it, but leave it out of the package. Do people feel comfortable with that, or... Okay. We got a yes and a yes? Okay. All right. Thank you. So now I'm back to ECB.
Again, just because the ones prior to that were all about adding the MASC language because they weren't existing, again, you can go back and amend. ECB is only a Burlington policy, and MASC recommends eliminating, and that's Building and Grounds Records and Reports. Mr. Brooks, if there are reports that you want that we develop in those six months, we can certainly, you know, add in that, but we're not following this policy now, and it's dated.
No, and I think it was the information we shared, so when the field studies came out and all that, this is how I read it, is like, we'll share the information when field studies come out and stuff like that. So I feel like that's already happening anyway.
So we're agreeing that we'll remove ECB?
Yes.
Okay. I am also looking back... Okay. I would like to flag the ECA Building and Grounds Security for a discussion about use of the grounds during the day. There's been neighbors with questions. So I'd like to flag... I feel like we can keep it as-is, but I'd like to flag it. EC...
A.
ECA. Yeah.
Right. Because there are teachers at Fox Hill who commented that people were coming in and using the playgrounds during the school day, and so you want to...
And there were neighbors who were concerned because they used to be able to walk into the conservation land, and so there's some issues coming up, so I'd like that to be flagged, to be looked at.
I think people were trying to find a way to have a path that they can use during the school day that would be okay to have access, that's marked somehow, so that they can get where they used to go.
Okay. All right. So we are now... Dr. Conti, I'll go back to you. Up to the EDC. Are we up to EDC?
Yes.
Yes. And again, I think that was straightforward. That was MASC policy. The school waste reduction, that's EDE, was a new Burlington policy, so they recommended keeping that. Student transportation services, there was no Burlington policy, so again, that wasn't... That was only MASC. The next ones that require sort of a School Committee decision, and Bob, you weighed in on this one too, was EEAEA, Bus Driver Examination and Training, and EEAB, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Commercial Vehicle Drivers. Those are only MASC policies, and they are School Committee Choice, and it may be different. Dr. Chen and I were speaking whether we own the buses or not. So Bob, you mentioned that because we contract out the services, they're the ones that hire the drivers and would test the drivers and do all that work?
So yes, that is correct. So the company currently, right now, that we are in contract with does perform a drug test, also does a CORY background check as well, and we get a copy of that. That comes right through our office. So that is all held through their office as they're their employees.
And those are part of our contract, and even when we have a new contract in a year, that would be part of the contract, that the bus company... It's part of the contract we have with the bus company that they are responsible for that. So I feel comfortable with that. And Ms. Bond?
I just had a question. Do they do random drug tests throughout the year? Do you know?
It is my understanding that they do, and they also have suspicion, if there are suspicion cases, that they do have a clause that they can. I don't know specifically how often they do random ones, but I do know that if there's just cause, that that does happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Monaco?
Which one are we actually looking at right now?
We're looking at EEAEA, Bus Driver Examination and Training.
So I know the bus company does it, but shouldn't we have something that it's our policy, that somebody has to do it? Either the bus company has to do it, or we have to do it, but like, the first one, courteous and careful drivers would be required. So if we have this policy and they have a driver that we don't think is courteous and/or careful, this policy gives us some legs, doesn't it?
Mr. Kuna?
So we have language in our current contract now. I can't speak for the future contract, but I'm saying right now, we have language for that already.
And does this language in any way interfere with the contract, or does the contract language in any way interfere with this policy? And is there a reason to get rid of this, or shouldn't we keep it?
I'm not sure... You don't have it now, so this is an MASC-only policy.
Okay. So we're adopting this?
Well, again, it's your choice. So what I'm saying, it's covered by contract now. Because we contract out for the transportation services, there are other districts that own their buses where I think you would be more responsible for having these policies in place. So it can sit both places, so you can have a policy, and it can be reflected in contract, but because we contract this service out, we tend to put...
I get it.
We tend to put the behaviors and all that.
But I like this policy. I'd like to add the policy.
Okay. Mr. Brooks?
I agree with adding the policy now. Kind of agree with Ms. Monaco, and we codify the language in the RFP, and as we go through bus contract RFPs, this policy gets updated to mirror that language, so that we're to relieve a cause in these situations. You know, it's the same language as the contract. It is a little bit of duplication of effort, but again, it gives us some recourse.
Ms. Bond?
I agree. I think if we put this language in, it would be helpful, besides having it in the contract. It's just something else that we can rely on.
So we're now talking just about EEAEA, the Bus Driver Examination and Training. And in this particular template, it says that the school officials will also have to have on file a medical certificate and proof of freedom from tuberculosis, and it feels to me that it adds burdens that are unnecessary if that's being kept. So I would want to... I'm not against having something like this, that whatever's in the contract would be our policy, but that not we take on, that we have to now file these things. So I'm not sure whether it makes sense to...
We could add in words, "school officials" or "bus contractor."
Okay. So if we want to word Smith a little here, Dr. Conti, on number two. Each driver will file with school officials or the bus company per contract, a medical certificate and proof of freedom from tuberculosis. Number three is only persons who are properly licensed. Number four is that the contractor will furnish us with a list of the names of drivers and safety records, and number five is that the contractor will notify if any change in bus drivers. Do any of those, Mr. Kuna, do that... Does that give us the kind of information we need?
Again, to the Chair. So in our current contract now, we facilitate or have knowledge of all of that currently. I think you had commented, or someone had commented, on whether or not our staff would particularly look at the licensure or any medical records of. I've discussed this with our nurse leader, and there are...
I'm sorry, you discussed it?
With our nurse leader.
Nurse leader, okay.
So there are certain things that we do have privy to and certain things that we don't, whether or not we get a checkmark or an email that says someone is clear, but we don't necessarily get to get that specific because they're not our employees currently. But some of the other things, as discussed, whether a driver is replaced, insurance, things like that, we are privy to that and get that information now.
And is that part of our contract?
Correct.
Okay. So with the change in wording on number two that we just discussed, are people choosing to keep this EEAEA policy? I'm seeing...
Yes.
Yes. And then EEAB is separate around the drug and alcohol testing. I'm still comfortable with it just being part of the contract that we have with the bus company, but what do other people think?
I'd much rather keep this in, because again, safety of students is paramount. It adheres, it holds the bus company to a standard. Again, it's an RFP, but it just gives us another mechanism.
Any other comments on it?
Does it say in here that it's the bus company?
The district shall adhere to federal law and DOT regulations requiring a drug and alcohol testing program for school bus drivers and commercial vehicle drivers. Such testing will be conducted for five different situations: pre-employment randomly, following an accident, following an authorization to return to duty, and upon reasonable suspicion that a driver is under the influence of alcohol or using drugs. That's only one paragraph, but is that part of our contract now, Mr. Kuna? Just that one paragraph?
My only question is the wording where it states the district shall adhere to.
Okay. And now the next paragraph?
I don't know that we have any legal ramification directly with the employee of the company. We have direct communication with the company, and the company can hold the employee responsible.
So I think we'd probably want to change the wording again. Let me just read the next paragraph. The district will comply with DOT protocols regarding the collection and testing necessary and regulations established. So that would imply that the district is going to do the testing. So I don't know that we want that paragraph, or reword it. And then it will comply with requirements of federal law and regulations, et cetera. Ms. Bond?
So I want to go back to the first paragraph, and again, we're talking about five different situations. Is that in our current contract? Or can we... I mean, I guess, I don't want to, you know, if we're putting that, those five stipulations in there, is that something they're willing to follow?
Sounds like it's federal.
Yeah, I know. I just want to double-check that we're just following the right...
Make sure the bus company's following the rights.
Right. That they're... They've got it in their contract, so we match. I understand it's federal, but...
I can verify three, the first three. The other two I can't comment on. I just don't have the answer on top of my head. But again, they do have to follow DOT regulations, as all the drivers have to be DOT certified.
Right. I just know from my own personal experience, based on what I do, sometimes things slip through the cracks, right? So I just want to double-check that we match.
So how would we word this? So the district is not responsible to be doing the testing, but whatever.
Suggested language would be district or contracted representative, and then you put a blurb in there that says they owe us a report on it quarterly, annually. quarterly, annually, you know, as changes happen, or something like that.
Ms. Monaco?
Would require the bus contractor to adhere.
Yeah.
So, Dr. Conti, are you comfortable with coming up with that language?
Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
Again, we'll require a bus contractor to adhere, and then we can insert that in, so
And if you could read through all three paragraphs to make sure they all line up correctly, that would be helpful.
Yep.
I'll let Darren do it.
I shall.
All right.
I think that'll be okay.
So, we are keeping EEAEA and EEAEB with some changes in the language. Are there any other comments on those two? Okay, I do want to go back to EEAA, walkers and riders. And the reason why is because this is an this is an, it's an MASC policy only. It's called walkers and riders, and it does not match what we do, EEAA. And it's an MASC policy that does not match our district at all. So, I do we have a written down of what our current, we offer students, all students a ride, it doesn't, this has different distances depending on the grade. So, Dr. Conti, do you have a suggestion on this?
It's all crossed out.
I know, that's because they're saying we shouldn't do it, right?
Yeah.
So, are we deleting, are we removing EEAA?
That was the suggestion, because that's not what we do.
Okay.
I think if the Transportation Committee wants to discuss with the full committee a change in transportation expectation, then we can talk about putting that into a future, a future policy in order to create the necessarily spacing on the busing that we lived through for whatever during the pandemic, and I'm sort of blanking that part of my life out, we had to create some right, we had to create some transportation, sort of different expectations to limit the ridership. And so, we've sort of done that before, but again, my suggestion would be we sort of take out the walker and rider piece, because we're not following it. Which is what we had recommended before, and then if there's a change, then that change in expectation would come to the entire committee, and the committee then would you're going to be having that conversation this fall, because we're going to be putting an RFP out.
Okay. So, we're removing EEAA, and in the future, if we wanted to put one in that was specific to what we do, then we can do that.
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
This is the only question I'm left with, is how do we codify our policy that we have a seat for every child that wants one, if we remove this? I know it's our policy right now, but isn't it codified in no way? So, how do we communicate that out to the world?
I guess it's just been a practice, Mr. Brooks. I think you can certainly go back, and that's how we wrote the RFP. Go ahead, Bob, if you want to.
I actually think this, this policy, if adopted, is the opposite, or at least takes away from our current. Because this has, you know, half mile and mile restrictions in it.
Yeah, the distances, I'm not necessarily, I don't think it's the greatest thing, that's why I'm not pushing back on it. But I just want to make sure that the seat for every child that wants one is, you know, somehow codified somewhere, that, you know, that's not going to change anytime soon.
I'd like to suggest that we, that we vote, that we vote on this package with it removed, but that either the Transportation Subcommittee could look into it and propose writing up what we do, and we could also put it as a flag to put in on the next round of going through the whole policy, rather than trying to write a new one tonight. Is that, everybody okay with that? So, we're removing it for tonight?
Yes.
And we will go forward.
I made note.
Yep. Oh, you got it, okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Conti, we are up to EEAEC.
And Madam Chair, the remaining policies in Section E either match Burlington, or again, there's only one at the end, which was the free and reduced price for food services, and that is, the MASC was an MASC only, that's EFC. And again, the policy was in place to codify the district's commitment to following the regulations regarding free and reduced meal services, which is federally regulated. So again, I'm assuming we would add that policy in. And then, other than that, there really, there were no further policies in Section E where the school committee had a choice to eliminate. And again, I think the policies that exist will be updated. And in taking this vote tonight, then they'll be reaffirmed for today's date. And then, again, so I think that Section E, from my perspective, you've you've answered the questions that I needed answered.
Does anyone else have a comment on Section E? Okay, Ms. Masardo spoke to me, she couldn't come tonight, and she has a concern about EEAJ, which is the regulation of motor vehicle idling on school grounds. It's a relatively new policy that we put in a few years ago. And she's concerned because she's working with Judy Crocker at Safe Roots to Schools, and they are not real happy with the the wording is pretty much close to what MASC is proposing. They're not real happy with it, and they're going to propose some updated language with MASC. She would like it if we could hold this one, and after MASC does their update, we could then vote specifically on that one. So, procedurally, we could vote as is, and then replace it as soon as we get new language, or we could hold and leave it out until we get new language. And I'm taking suggestions, Ms. Bond.
Actually, I mean, since it's not that big of a deal to make the change, why don't we just put it in as we have it, and then make the change once the change is made? Because if we have nothing, then we have nothing. So.
Okay. Other suggestions? So, we will include EEAJ as proposed in our vote tonight, but we are aware that we probably want to change it very soon. Okay? All right. So, Dr. Conti, would we like to take a vote on this section separately?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, you want a motion?
I do, thank you.
Section E?
As a second reading.
I approve, I move that we approve Section E as presented with the changes discussed tonight.
I'll second it.
That's it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, the chair votes aye, that's 4-0-0. All right, so, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Section F, so this is again a second reading. Section F is a relatively short section, as you would see, it has to do with facilities. Most of the policies, the MASC updated their policy language, so these are just going to be updated. The one policy suggestion was the last one, which is FFA memorials, not memorial school, but sort of building memorials. There's no local policy, and so it's an MASC policy only, and basically, they said inclusion or not is at the school committee's discretion. So, again, if you want to include it and then go back and change it, that's fine. But the, that was the one question I had with Section F was the memorials.
Why do we need it at all?
You don't need it at all, and I think that's, it's your discretion.
I would just leave it out.
Other suggestion, thoughts? Okay. All right, so we'll leave that out. I do, though, think that we should look at FB, facilities planning. This is a policy that was never adopted, and I think we should not adopt it because it doesn't follow the procedures that we're doing. And again, when we go through these policies, we maybe should flag facilities planning, and perhaps review memorials. But that, I don't see the need to put in something that we're not following now.
Okay.
That's all Xed out, right?
Well, FA
FB.
FB is Xed out, yes, okay.
All right, I move that we accept Section F, with the exception of deleting the last one on, what is it?
Memorials, FFA.
Just leave that one out.
And leave out FB?
Yeah, well, that one's already taken.
Okay, okay.
Leave out FB, right.
So, we're going to delete
I'll second it.
Okay. Other, okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the chair votes aye, so that's 4-0-0.
Is that it on policy?
What?
Is that it for policy? Are you going to go over new ones?
No, we have a first reading to do, but I just wanted to ask the school committees, because I don't need to read this to you, and
Before you do that, I just have to make a statement. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just feeling very excited, because I've been trying to get our policy manual updated for eight years, and we just approved two more sections, and we're getting there, and I'm very, very excited. So, I just had to say that, okay. Now, we'll move on to the next section, which is a first reading for, okay, thank you, Dr. Conti.
Again, Madam Chair, I am certainly willing to read through all this, but I think you're getting better at reading my terrible writing, and
It's not bad at all.
My notes on each of the policies. So, my suggestion, and just in the sort of sake of time and your sanity, is as a first reading, you can go through this, you can go through my notes, and then you'll see if there's a school committee choice. I think you'll see if there's an MASC-only policy, or if there's a Burlington-only policy. And then, when we do a second read, again, if you want to make any of the changes, and again, you are welcome to change any of these at any time, that that might be just a more efficient way of going through this. But again, if anyone has any questions, I can go through some individual policies now. But again, you should have a copy of my notes, and you should have a copy of the policies that are there.
So, is there anyone who has questions for Dr. Conti about his notes or any of the policies in Section G? Okay, I have a question on GBEBD, which is online fundraising and solicitations. This is one you said is our choice, but I would like, if you would ask Ms. Kasha for her opinion, if this is helpful, and if it matches what we do, and what she feels would be the most productive for the district. So, GBE BD. GBE
BD, online fundraising, I got it.
Online fundraising, I'd like to know what Ms. Kasha has to say about that. Then, on GBED, is tobacco use on school property by staff members is prohibited? I'm wondering if the reason we don't need to include students in that is because students are under 18, and it's illegal for them anyway, and is that why that, you know, I have a sort of a question on that.
Wasn't it crossed out?
It says we don't need it.
Right.
So, maybe, okay, so we might be just, but I just want to check.
I think your reasoning is sound.
Okay, and then, on GBGE, domestic leave policy, I liked the policy, but again, there's a form in there. I don't think we need the form for people to sign as part of our policy manual, and unless, you know, somebody else had an opinion on that. Yes, Ms. Monaco?
What I've seen with policies all along for a long time, is that some policies do have procedures attached to them. And so, the form, you know, if the form's correct, it's okay. And it's not really part of the policy, it's just the procedure that goes along with it.
Right. Through the chair.
Yes.
I'll agree with that, because actually, we're going through the same thing at work, and we call them enablers. So, it's something that goes with the policy that people can look at if they need more information, or whatever, so.
I'm just concerned about an individual who might need that policy. But it would, it would not be something that the person would have to sign, so I guess that would be okay. I mean, they wouldn't sign it in the policy manual, they would see in advance what they would need to sign by having it there. Okay, that makes sense to me. Let me just see, what are we up to? What was that one? I did have to double check your handwriting on a couple of these, Eric.
It looks fine to me.
Okay. I finally figured out the word I couldn't read was recommend. So then, it made it easier for the other ones.
Okay.
On GBK, there's a sentence that says that this complaint procedure would be in the presence of administrator who made the ruling. And so, I'd like to alert everyone as they look through this for the second reading, under GBK, if we want that to be true, if we don't like it, I don't necessarily have a I don't feel, but I feel like we should make that decision specifically. And okay, so that was something I wanted to alert the committee when they're looking at this. For GCA and GCBB, I would like, Eric, for you to give your, you said it was school choice, school committee choice, but I'd be interested in your preference at some point. And it looks like we were okay, there's a couple you were, that were not needed. I think I'd like to alert people to look at GCIDA, the out-of-state faculty travel. I'm not sure that's a needed one because of other policies we have. And GCO, Dr. Conti, evaluation. I wanted to be sure that it gets reviewed, that it does not conflict with our contract.
Okay.
If you could have GC, GCO. All right. And under GCRD, which is tutoring for pay, I did like it, but in one paragraph, it says a private tutoring business, and I wanted it to say a private tutoring business or private tutoring. So, somebody might say, well, it's, I don't have a business, but it's not like LLC or something, I don't know what those are. So, I'd like to specify that in GCRD. GCRD. That one. Okay. And on GDO, I wasn't sure that the wording actually said who was going to do evaluations, and I'd like us to specify who is doing the evaluations. GDO. Thank you.
All right.
And on H, let me just take a quick look. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brooks.
Just one comment for G. So, GBI, no real issue with it, but again, I think this leaves us open, and I've asked for it before, is, you know, we need to craft a policy to provide amplify and guidance for this one in the form of a social media and communications policy, to help tighten that up. Because again, not necessarily that it's this instance that's been an issue, but we really need to get to somewhere where that is addressed, and some firm policies put in place to address, you know, how we're going to have front-facing communications from staff.
Yeah, I think there's probably an election or two coming up that would probably heighten the need for this as well. So, Mr. Brooks, why don't I see if there are other policies around? Marian and I can ask if there's other things, we have the responsible use policy for sort of technology and social media, but maybe we can link.
Yeah, and again, it doesn't have to be in conjunction with GBI, it can be a complete separate thing for social media communications. But again, it's, you know, caused problems in the past, and like, we'd like to not relive that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like to support having a separate policy regarding social media, because actually, under the GBI, which is staff participation in political activities, I'm actually not completely comfortable with the wording, because I think it should be more specific of on school grounds and during school time versus public employees. Are we, are public employees prohibited under state law from soliciting funds for political campaigns, even when I'm not on my work hours and at my workplace? So, I would like to be more specific, because I have a feeling that's not accurate. Are you, somebody shaking their head here?
You can't do it on school grounds.
Right, so Right. So, but it doesn't say that. And I don't want to put in a policy that says that somebody could get in trouble for doing something that's actually legal under state law.
Is this MASC's policy?
This is, sometimes there's a little, yeah. So if you could have Darren maybe review GBI for political activities, and we also, you know, hopefully we'll come up with a good social media one, again, flag it for the top of the list to be implemented at some point. And also, you know, if somebody is, even in the first paragraph, employees have the same civic responsibilities and they're allowed to campaign for elective public office or et cetera, and that would be, you know, outside of school property, but the other ones would also be outside of, okay?
Okay.
All right. Were there other people who had questions on G or H that I missed? No. And then I would like people to think carefully about, in H, it's about negotiations. And there's, there's a suggestion there, Dr. Conti, for a combination, and I'd like it if maybe you could propose what that combination would look like.
All right.
Okay. Because it's saying that there's two different approaches, and then we can choose the wording rather than wordsmithing it at our meeting next time.
Okay.
Okay? Any other comments or suggestions for Section G or E? No. All right. So.
And just thank you for this, the first reading. Marian, we have I completed. And Dorothy also, did she get us just I?
The question's the only one left to review. She gave us JK and L.
Do we do H?
We did H, yes, sure.
Yeah, so she, yeah, so we, we're, she's moving very quickly, so we have, we have I to review, we'll obviously do the second readings with this, then we have I as a first reading, and we have drafts of JK and L that I need to review with her. So.
Don't rush.
No, I think what we, I think what we, sort of the timeline we discussed is end of the calendar year, and it looks like we're sort of on track to do that, so.
How many more are there? I, JK, and L, or?
She told me, Marian, I'm forgetting.
Okay.
Do you remember?
I is ready.
Okay.
JK and L. I put in the first reading.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll probably need to spread those out. I think the student one is probably long, we might even need to do only that one section. So, well, like I said, we'll look at the length of them and try to, but in terms of the timing, I think, I think we're on track again for the, for the calendar year. And then, then at least when you're reviewing and amending, you'll be doing it from a complete.
Yes.
Process.
Right. So we will have Section I as a first reading at the next meeting? Is that the plan?
Yeah, just that.
I said that, yeah. Okay, great.
I think so.
Exciting. So, our next agenda item, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and a, I want to thank Dr. Chen for putting an entry plan together, which you all have. An entry plan is a great district leadership strategy. It sort of is, helps with transparency and let everyone know what Lisa is up to. I also think it's a, it's a great document from my perspective for pacing, because Lisa officially started July 1st, and then everyone wants everything done by July 2nd. And so we also need to make sure that Dr. Chen, as rapidly as she is picking stuff up, has enough time to develop relationships with people and get to know us as well. So, Lisa, so again, welcome, thank you. And if you want to maybe speak to some highlights of your entry plan, and I just want to thank you for putting it together, because it's been helpful for me.
Well, so first of all, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to serve here in Burlington. This is very exciting for me. And I have enjoyed the conversations I've had with school committee members, also with the school select board member, Mike Espoio, who is inviting me on Wednesday to also do a podcast with him. So that is going to be exciting. But I've had the opportunity to talk to some directors, some assistant principals thus far, some principals, and I will be also talking to some leadership folks. I want to thank also Ms. Simon for helping me get some members of the religious community, so I'll be able to reach out to them as well and to speak with them. And also to the principals who have assisted me in getting the names of the PTO presidents, so I can talk to them as well, too. And so there's just a list of people that I will be seeking their feedback and input, so that I can better learn more about the cultures and the rituals and traditions. But as Dr. Conti said, really to establish a relationship with everyone here, so that they come to trust me and also the process. Because in my experience, I could have the best ideas in the world, but it doesn't really mean anything if you don't have the community behind you. And so that is the number one goal, which is to establish my credibility, my trust, so it's not just positional authority, but they can, people can come to count on me that what I say is what I mean and how I act. Some really great highlights that I've had the opportunity, and I again want to thank this committee and also Dr. Conti with both giving me the latitude, but yet, at the same time, if there are some things that need to be addressed, we don't wait forever to address them. We have to make sure that the processes and procedures are put into place. So, things that I've heard thus far, just some general themes coming up, is just, you know, clear communication. And I think one of the things, and I've shared this with some of the members that I've had the opportunity to talk with, is that we are really looking to put together a math night. And I think the math coach, the lead math coach is excited about that. The same thing with the literacy night, to talk about all the literacy and how parents can assist to their children and reading strategies and comprehension strategies. I think that that's really important. We have also talked about, and I, we're keeping an eye right now as the state is taking a, getting comments on family life education, because I experienced that in Louisa in Virginia when we had to shift that family life curriculum. And so that's something we're keeping an eye on. And then the other thing that I've heard, and I know that there is a lot of controversy with this going back and forth, but we, prior to my official start, we began to have conversations. And I really want to applaud the teachers and the leaders that I've had an opportunity to talk to. That's the math department chair at the high school, the math, the math lead person who is at the middle school, Carrie, who is also the lead math coach here in our division. And also the principals as well, too, and the assistant principals, because I, I know that one of the things we have to take a look at is the math curriculum. And we want to make a better progression when it comes to pre-K through 12. And especially a topic that I've been hearing is Algebra I, okay? And so I, from experience, that I've experienced, I know that Algebra I is your gateway to calculus and on such. And so it's really important for us to have a look at, you know, what do we do with those students who are developing at a faster rate, not the procedural math concepts, we're talking about the conceptual math thinking. They totally get it. They're, they're quick, they're getting it. What should we do with Algebra I, and how do we best align it so that we meet the needs at the end, you know, of where our students really need to go and the courses that they're going to take. And I'm really also very excited at the same time to get more information about the audit, because one of the things that we're talking about is, you know, how do we not only build this, but sustain it? And so one of the things that I've learned from Dr. Conti and also my mentors as well, too, is that what we build now isn't just for today, but it's also for tomorrow. So sometimes it may not seem quick enough, but what we have to do has to be sustainable. So it has to really work and not just be a one-shot deal. So at times, sometimes, there is, you know, I wish it could hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, but we really have to look at the data. And I was thinking about you, Mr. Brooks, because I had a really great conversation today with Robin Milliano. I'm going to tell you, Open Architect is out of this world. I'm excited about it. I'm excited about what we're going to share to parents. I'm excited about our administrators using it. I know that we just recently got it in January. But in looking at all the reports that Robin has put out there, we're talking student attendance, longitudinal data, we're talking about discipline, we're talking about reports that you can pull not only from Aspen, but it's just a really great source of state reports that you can pull that's on a dashboard that is just so easy to read. So I know, for instance, that Carrie had met with Robin, and they started to take a look at their math spreadsheets that they're doing in the elementary level, and how do we input them in Open Architect? So visually, you know, reading it, the eye-ready, aligning it with the SOL scores, that is so important. And then later on, how do we introduce that to the parents so they have their own dashboard so they can see longitudinally how their kids are going? And I just want to thank you, Dr. Conti, for bringing that, because we had kind of something similar in Louisa, which was Tableau, but it was not to this extent. The visuals are beautiful, and I'm just really excited to get started on that. It's, this is just, it's really exciting. And then I want to give a shout-out, because I've just seen such incredible, hard-working people. I love it when I have the opportunity to go and visit classrooms or visit any type of student learning. So I just, I really want to give a shout-out to Donna Sullivan for her summer learning, to Carrie Lamprey and her crew with the ESY, especially with the preschool, that vision that's coming forth, so our students can have a better introduction to what Burlington is all about. And also to Nicole Mondello and her crew, and the people working under Christine Chicanelli, who are doing the ESY program. I can tell you that I've seen firsthand in going through each of these different classrooms, that we are on point when it comes to reading. They're looking at phonemic awareness in this. Our kids are using some of the Orton-Gillingham strategies. It is just so nice to see, and the curriculum is aligned. I'm going to tell you, it's aligned. I know Nicole Mondello, we had spoken before I'd arrived here, we had talked about, how do we make thematic units? They are beautiful, beautiful. It's good, good stuff going on right now, really good stuff. So kudos to all of those hard teachers who are working. Just really great stuff. It's just, I've been having fun, a lot of fun. And disrupting, and I've met, I want to give a shout-out to the Burlington Police, we have a joke about this. So within a short period of time, I'm learning how, and thank you to Bob's tutorial session, although the last time was not my fault. I have tripped the alarm system now five times trying to come in late at night and also on the weekends. I have met Burlington's finest police. I'm now just going to go down to Burlington Police and meet all of them all at one time. But it's just, it's been an incredible journey thus far, and it's gonna, and it's just going to get even better.
Well, welcome and onward.
Yeah, onward.
Yeah.
Definitely. Great stuff.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, the entry plan is posted on the district website for anyone who would want to see it and to, and to look at it. And again, I think the, there is going to be a lot of observing and getting to know and talking and listening, and that happens at first. But really excited for the support and for Dr. Chen's expertise here. So excited for things moving forward. Madam Chair, with your permission, just to move on to the equity audit status update.
Your desk, please.
Thank you. So at your desks, Lori Casna, who is the primary auditor in this, gave us a, I asked her for a, an update. She is very close to being finished. She was just, we've been in really almost daily communication over the last couple of weeks, checking on data points. I think she was also looking for some clarification on some things that came up. So, but I did ask for something to prepare for the school committee tonight. We have not received the full report yet, but I think that we are close. A few things that I wanted to highlight, again, I don't think I need to read this for you all, and we can certainly put this up on the website so people can see, you know, can have access to this as well, is there was both quantitative and qualitative information gathered. The qualitative piece, I think she was very specific. So she, there were focus groups held with the English Language Learner Parent Advisory, the LPAC, and as well with the Special Education Parent Advisory, the CPAC. Focus groups were held with students at Marshall Simons and Burlington High School. And then in addition, there were surveys sent out, and she even included the response rate for those, for those groups. So the educator and staff survey, she got 244 responses. The parent and guardian survey, 366. And again, the grades four through 12 students, there were over 1,600 responses. We did send the survey out in multiple languages, and as you can see, we were, part of what the audit will help us see, is we did get, we didn't get any responses back to the Spanish version, so it might be an area that we follow up on. And I think that's the main point that I want to make again and reinforce for people. This isn't an investigation report. There's no specific incident that's going to be investigated or reported on. This is looking at sort of school district policies, again, looking at community needs, looking at the administration, staff, professional learning and curriculum development. This is a starting point, not an endpoint. So this is going to help us identify where we need to move forward. To Ms. Cadillac's point, it's really going to be a place where Dr. Chen and I and the rest of the staff look at this document. We are contracting with William James University, and we'll be working with a Dr. Chris Taylor to also help us interpret the results that we're getting and to look at it, and so that we can have a clear vision and then a clear direction moving forward, so that we can measure progress. And I think that's going to help us have sustainable efforts. One thing that was clear with all the districts from our conference last week was this is, it's difficult work, but it's also work that has to take place over time. And if anyone has the expectation that in a month, 12 months, 15 months, that everything is going to be addressed, or historical marginalization is going to be sort of fixed, that that causes more problems. And we just need to make sure we have a sustainable path. We will create, again, in areas of focus, then we will sort of post the job with those areas of focus identified, and then hopefully attract people who will have strengths in those, in those areas. Again, and it may be, it may not be, for instance, where our largest achievement gaps may be with our EL students, the largest population of which may be Spanish-speaking, then it may make sense that if we're getting some diversity support, that we ask for someone who's bilingual. That's just sort of an example of sort of one of the areas of focus in what we might do. Obviously, if we're focusing on curriculum, then that person would need to have knowledge and a curriculum background. So that's the type of thing we want to do. The, Dr. Monte Jackson, who was one of our presenters, really talked about, she, she talked about really a six-to-nine-year process. And what she basically said is even for those of us in leadership positions, by having a system in place and having a sustainable effort in place, then the work is bigger than any individual. So it's almost like you're setting the table for the next person to come in, and because it's going to be a continuous journey moving forward. And I think that's just how we have to look at this work, so we continue to make progress. So when exactly the posting will take place will be, we need to get the report, we need a chance to go through it. It'll be, I'm assuming sometime in the fall. And we will really make sure that it aligns with what our, with what our needs are. We will certainly ask for a community input. We will make sure there are people who are involved in the process. There is the position in the budget, the position's there, so that's sort of is done. There's a There's a commitment to it. But really want to make sure that we're looking at this audit as a starting point, and that we are clearly identifying, there should be a clear purpose. We should all be pretty set on where we're going to focus on, what we're going to be sort of addressing, and then what measures we're going to use as we sort of go along to make sure that we're making, that we're making progress. And of course, there'll be situations along the way that pop up without planning, because we work with children, and that's just how life is when you're working with children. So again, I don't want you to think this is going to be so planned that there's going to be no surprises. There are always surprises, and we will address them as we, as they come up and as we move forward. But I think along with this, the math curriculum work that's happening is DEI work, as we mentioned. The special education work that's going on is DEI work. The English language support is DEI work, and the mental health supports that we're doing, and the SEL work that we're doing is also DEI work. So I also don't want this to be so narrowly focused that it's no one person's responsibility, it's really all of our responsibility. And again, when we identify a clear direction, when we prioritize our needs, we will do that with all of you, and then I think the job description and the process will be clear once that is all done. Again, Madam Chair, you're going to ask me timeframe. I'm hoping for August. The next meeting is when we will sort of have a draft available. I'm hoping actually to get it sooner than that, but our next meeting is in August, so that's when I think that we would probably release the, the audit publicly would be at that meeting.
That's good. And I, I do want to repeat what you said, that this sort of overview of the purpose and scope of the assessment, and a brief kind of update that we got tonight will be posted on the website, that when you get the final report, I know that you and Dr. Chen will want some time to look at it. It will include not just a report on actuals, but also recommendations. So I do want you to take the time to do that. If you have the ability to look at the report and get to us, tell us what you, your take on it in August, that would be great. So I'm very pleased that we have an end in sight and that we've had good sharing of information from the people doing this equity audit. So I want to thank them and thank everyone who participated. I know a lot of people contributed. They did a lot of data review, but they also talked to a lot of people, and I'm really glad that that happened, because that's a real important piece of it. Is, are there any other comments from anyone else at this stage? No. So, moving on to facilities and finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob is going to take over a lot for this section, but we have a transportation work going on, something that we tried a little bit different this spring as opposed to last spring, is, I want to thank Bob. He got a survey out to parents and asked, asked parents if there were any people who were certain that they were not going to be using transportation, because we had been asking the bus company to design routes for everybody. And then what ends up happening is the first two weeks of school, then we make adjustments. And what we're trying to do is start by making those adjustments first. And we understand that people's lives change, and they can always get back on a bus. I just want to stress that, even if you told us that you don't have use of a bus, but if your life situation changes, we have room for everybody. What we are trying to do is get the stops and the routes more defined earlier if we have better information. So Bob, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I know that that's, you put a lot of time into that, so I do want to thank you for doing that work earlier.
Well, that was a perfect introduction. No, really, that, that did steal my thunder, but I appreciate that, because that was the crux of that, right? We really want to get as much parent input as possible. So that survey did go out on May 24th, and we let it run for one full month. So we closed it on June 22nd. There were two email reminders that went out. We had 1,214 responses from individual families, and that accounted for 1,923 students. So we got a lot of participation. I'm actually super proud of that, and thank you to all the parents. What we did find out is that there are 246 students right now that were noted as to not wanting to take the bus as of August 30th, September 1 of next year, right? So what that means is, is that of that answer, 1,677 students still do plan on taking the bus. And as you know, roughly with 3,500 students minus 250, we still have to account for approximately, give or take, in the, in the range of 3,200 students riding that bus. So what did we do with that, with that information? On June 22nd, the same exact day, we had already pulled our existing routes and pulled the seniors out of the information that we sent to the bus company, but we held off until we closed that report. We pulled those 246 students out on a separate tab. So we let the bus company know that those students don't plan to ride the bus, and we took the remaining students, and they're going to start planning the routes based on the information provided. We have asked for draft routes to be provided in the second week in August, and the reason the second week in August is, is that we flipped the Aspen data for the next current year, usually around the first week of August. So August 1 through August 7 is that data export. So once we have that data, we'll share it with the bus company, hopefully with what they currently have versus any new students, pluses and minuses. A short turnaround time should be inevitable. And our anticipation is to post the finalized routes on the website August 23rd. That is our anticipation, that is one full week before the first day of school. As you know, I have been lazy in the past and put them out later or closer to the start of school, and that has been.
Wait a minute, you don't have to call yourself lazy because it was later.
I, I want to own that, right? So there have been times that we have pushed harder, and I have not been able to commit to that, so I will own that one. And that being said, we're trying to push this harder and faster this year to make sure that we can give parents enough information and a good timeline prior to the start of school. So again, our anticipation is August 23rd, one week prior to. That being said, I just want to remind everybody on the committee and those at home watching, we have 18 current buses in our contract. This is the last year of our contract. So while only, not only do we have a transportation subcommittee, as Mrs. Bond mentioned earlier, so that's going to be July 28th, right? The point of that conversation is, is that we need to figure out not only what happens this year, but what happens, you know, next year in our future contracts. This year, in order to make routes work at the high school, we needed to change the high school time by 10 minutes, right? So the high school time was originally set for 8:30, and now we changed it to 8:40, which matches Francis Wyman. The reason we had to make that change is we've seen an uptick in traffic in Burlington. I can't codify the exact number of cars there, but anyone who drives in Burlington between 7 o'clock in the morning and 8:30 in the morning knows that the traffic is up. That being said, we have some limitations as well, too, right? We can't drop our students off, let's say at the middle school or the elementary school, our earlier tiers, too early in the morning, right? We need staff in the building, right? So we can't drop them off an hour early. We can't drop them off 45 minutes early. So right now, we have about a 20 to 22-minute window between our tiers, right? And anyone, again, who drives in Burlington realizes it's tough to leave one spot, do an average of 12 to 15 stops on a bus route, and then get back to a next school in under 25 minutes. We were able to do that at the middle school, our first tier. Our second tier is our Fox Hill, Pine Glen, and Memorial. We were able to do it. We did meet some times, again, where we had to look at, obviously, getting the students off the middle school buses earlier, so that way we can get to the elementary schools earlier. But we really got into a jam where we could not make up that difference at the high school, where we could with the extra 10 minutes at Francis Wyman. There is a request from the principal for us to look at that again and see if we can get that time back. I will say publicly, it's going to be a challenge, because we're still stuck with that, that small window of time to make it happen. I won't answer that yet. We'll see what the routes look like. But again, please understand, it's that timeframe that is really, really tough for us. So, let me look at my notes, but that's, that's kind of a great stance as to where we're at right now. I'm hopeful that the flip in data in August 1st is good, and that we can get more information, get the routes posted, and, yeah, I'll stop there for now and take some questions and comments, please.
Yes, Ms. Monica.
The problem with the 8:30 change to 8:40 is it really impacts the students at the high school. And I know it's difficult, because the buses, other buses, and the problems with traffic, but I'm not sure how creative we can get, but that's a change. To go back to 8:30 would really be beneficial, because it, it impacted the students getting extra help. The end of the day was different. The, there were just all sorts of problems with the kids that needed time to meet with staff members, and it, you know, it was a problem. So I hope that there is some way to make that happen.
Any other comments on that? I just want to reiterate that there's so many moving parts, that I can't believe we get it to work as well as we do, but it doesn't work 100% for everybody, for every situation. And I know you're working on it, and, you know, I hope that we can figure out how to make it work so that it's, it is smoother, and if, maybe our new transportation subcommittee will think of some brilliant new idea. But in the meantime, I know everybody's trying real hard to work on it. Dr. Conti.
Bob, is Nicole, am I speaking, is Nicole online?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Nicole, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just for the committee, you, you and I spoke, I know we have some large requests for proposals going out in the fall. The state has really taken over, for instance, the food service bidding and made that much more prescriptive. You said they are doing a lot more with transportation, but not to that extent. Do you have a timeline when you think the RFP needs to go out for transportation services? Just, just to give the committee, I know you don't commit to a date, but again, a rough estimate, when, when that needs to be done?
Yeah, so I think early fall, like mid-October, probably at the latest. And I think that it would be helpful if, if maybe, I don't know what the, like, the next agenda is for that transportation subcommittee meeting, but I'd be happy to attend those also, so that we can make sure that, you know, all of our specs and everything align with, with what the committee wants to see in our next bid.
That would be great if you were there. So again, just for the committee, it looks like October is going to be when that RFP goes out. And Nicole, is it, is it a straight five-year, or is it a three-year with a two-year extension? What did we do last time?
We did a five-year last time. And these are all things that we can take into consideration, as we're developing the specs. Typically, like a five-year helps with the cost, because we're able to amortize, the company's able to amortize the cost of the buses over a longer period of time, which helps bring down the cost. But again, things that, options that we can discuss as we're developing the specs.
And then just, not, not connected to this RFP, but then you're also planning on doing the project manager for the high school around that same timeframe?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you for hopping on from the, from above.
Okay. So are there any questions about the transportation RFP, or any other questions for this transportation item?
Nope.
I have another question, but it's just something that Eric just brought up.
All right, go ahead.
What's going on with the food services RFP?
Bob, do you, food services RFP, is that, again, Nicole's online, too? It hasn't closed yet?
My understanding, yeah, next week. Sorry. Sorry for speaking over you, Nicole.
Okay. All right. The next item is the Fox Hill School Building Committee update. Mr. Kuna, do you have any updates for us?
Just briefly, as you all know, we submitted the PDP, so that's good news. We'll obviously have to wait for that back, or at least any feedback back from the MSBA. I'm just trying to look at my notes right now. Besides any subcommittees, I think the next SBC meeting is August 1st.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. So I think that's it for now.
We're just checking on those dates. So August 1st is the next School Building Committee meeting, and then the one after that is August 21st.
21st.
21st, yep. Okay. All right. Good. Any other questions or comments for the Fox Hill School Building Committee item? Okay, the Burlington High School update, standing agenda, and we have the, the proposed building committee. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, Bob, I want to just recognize he's been doing a lot of the organization here, so Bob, I'll turn it over to, to you for the, for the proposed building committee.
Great, thank you to the chair. This form will look very familiar, as you've seen it multiple times with the Elementary School Building Committee. This is a template that is taken from the MSBA. Some of the standard members, you will see, I shouldn't necessarily call them standard, but they're predetermined within the regulations and the template. So some of those members are also on other committees, as in the elementary school. You'll notice that I did not put any voting members on here, as this is a first reading. If we were going to take the direction that we used in the last, I can make comments as to who was a voting member. Also, I did note that it was voted and discussed, that I just want to confirm that the chair of this committee would be Catherine Bond, and that the vice chair would be Martha Simon. I will also have to note that. Now, again, this form does not get submitted to MSBA, as this is not an MSBA program right now, but I just want to make sure that we're trying to mimic this exactly in the event that we are lucky enough to be selected into MSBA in the future. Every other person who needed a recommendation came from the principal, Mark Sullivan of the high school. So he reached out to staff members, and he recommended, I can read them if you choose, Wendy Swirwinski, Laura Maida, and Tom Regan as staff members. From apparent, recommended Gail Pinkham. And there are actually two students that Mr. Sullivan recommended as well, too, Colin Irwin and Esther Ma. So I will just state that at some point, there will be a communication, what's the word that I want to use here? It may be difficult to communicate with the students through the public school email. If we follow a similar structure where we actually hire the OPM, and then hire on a design team and so forth, the students' messages wouldn't be received through their BPSKA12 account. We can obviously work through that, but I just want to make note that we don't have any students right now on the Elementary School Building Committee, so.
Well, I, I was actually going to just comment, as a former high school teacher, it's, it's actually exciting to see that there's students on this building committee, because high school students really are capable of contributing a huge amount. And at any age, kids can contribute, but it feels really important and valuable to have students on this high school building committee. So whatever we need to do to work it out, whether we have them use, if they have a different email they can use, or whether you can get it so their emails are accessible, let's do it, because I think their voices will be really valuable. So that's great.
If I could just make a few more comments.
Sure.
Again, you all should have this in your packets, just to make sure, but remember, knowledgeable and educational mission and function of facility. Mark Sullivan recommended Joe Atabato. Local budget official, a member of local finance committee, John Eiler, who will be the chair of Ways and Means, and member of community with architectural, engineering, or construction experience. I am recommending Neil Guancey, so.
Good. So, do you have a procedure for determining voting members?
Madam Chair, what, no, again, Bob can tell you this, too, but what's, what's great about this is we're following the MSBA process without the MSBA. So you can say everyone votes, you could say only one person votes, you can sort of, their board doesn't need to approve it. So we are following their process, because we do think the process is well thought out and well-practiced. But, but again, I think we can have a meeting, and there may be some people who are interested in voting or not. Typically, when we've changed the Typically, when we've changed the Fox Hill Building Committee, we've had to ask MSBA to, not for their permission, but they have to then approve the change. None of that's required now. So again, I think probably we can put together a meeting closer to the start of school, because that's when the students and faculty will be available. And then Nicole's already working on, as you heard, for the RFP, and then we can involve people in, again, groups of people can't write a proposal. I think we'll have Nicole write the proposal, but I'm sure then people will be involved in the selection of the folks that respond to the RFP. So then, again, we should be sort of up and running more formally sometime in the early fall.
Does anyone have any further comments or questions about the Burlington High School Building Committee, which I'm also very excited is happening and we're getting it started and that we're almost ready, I mean, we're talking about getting an OPM for that project, so I'm very excited about that. Again, with thanks to Town Meeting for funding the feasibility study for this new project. We know there's a lot going on in the school building area. It's going to cost a lot of money, but these are all really important facilities that we need to keep providing a 21st century education for our students. So thank you for everyone. The next item is the Pine Glen update, standing agenda item. Is there any update, Ms. Monica?
I'll defer.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we keep it on the front burner. I think all of what we're doing with the high school may, may take a very long time. And as I think about it, I think part of the reason we didn't get SBA funding is because the high school's in very good shape. And if you walk through it, what you'll see is a building that in no way needs to be torn down. It needs to be maybe fixed or maybe some parts of it replaced or whatever, but I see that as a very long process, and I want to make sure that Pine Glen is not stalled out because of that. I think we should have Pine Glen right on the front burner all the time from now on.
Dr. Conti, did you have a comment you want to make?
No, I just, I don't have anything to add to Pine Glen. I think at this point, the conversations about Pine Glen are very integrated into the Fox Hill conversations. And at some point, if we choose a certain direction, then I do think we'll need to have a separate Pine Glen conversation. And I just think the agenda item, we're keeping it on there, so it does stay on the front burner, but there's not a whole lot to add until we sort of make a directional choice for Fox Hill, and then we'll have a much easier, it'll be easier to fill this agenda item. We may even be talking about a feasibility study for Pine, I mean, again, there'll be other very particular things that we can discuss, but I think right now, we're obviously having those conversations within, within the larger elementary conversation that we're having. So I don't really have anything to add to the Pine Glen agenda item topic.
Does anyone else have any comments? I just wanted to comment about the high school project, that it may take a long time, and it is in good shape, because just as we've taken good care of all of our buildings, it is in good shape. But I don't think that means that we can determine what, when, and how it would be improved upon. And that's why we're having, we're going to go out to bid for an OPM. We're going to have a feasibility study done. We did have an HVAC feasibility study. They're actually, Town Meeting might get a little confused. We did have an HVAC feasibility study done, which came up with $80 million worth of renovations just for the HVAC system, and that it would trigger all sorts of things. And so it, even though we do have a good building that we're taking good care of, I don't think that means we should slow down in looking at it. I think Burlington High School is the priority. It was the priority before we put in our request for the MSBA to have them help us with the Fox Hill project, which was originally what we had proposed. High school issues include lack of accessibility. High school issues include no sprinklers, and there are things that we live with, because they're grandfathered in, they're not required, but there are things that we, I would like to see us addressing, just as there are issues in Pine Glen and there are issues at Fox Hill, that yes, we're, I mean, I spoke to a Pine Glen teacher this, last night. The building is in good, you know, it's in good shape for us to teach in. And I think it's misleading that, you know, we're saying, you know, on one hand, you show the pictures of Fox Hill with the hallway offices, which are not perfect, or the stuff, you know, the stains on the ceiling or whatever, but it's because we are taking good care of the buildings. But I don't feel that it's reasonable, I don't feel that the high school's in very good shape, in no way needs to be torn down. I think we need to find out. I think we need to find out what the various options are, because I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. I can't tell you what the best thing to do with this building is. I've always imagined we would renovate it, but somebody who was an engineer looked at it and said, "We might need to replace it." I don't know what the answer's going to be when we get there, but I want to hear what the professionals say about it when we look at all the different various things. It's going to cost a lot of money, just like the other, the elementary project is, and we have to make decisions with all of that in mind. These are all very complex decisions, and they do interact with each other and affect each other. So I just wanted to comment on that. Ms. Monica?
Yeah, I agree with you, Martha. That's why we're doing a feasibility study. I just think that sometimes people get a little carried away with the high school. You know, I've heard people say things or write things that, that buildings aren't well cared for, and that's not true. They are well cared for. And I've heard people say that, you know, what if a boiler blows up? Well, then you get a new boiler. You do what you have to do to maintain the building as it is while we go through the process, which I'm concerned will be a very long process, because I don't think it's a simple matter of getting an OPM and a designer, and they design a new building, and you build it, and then you tear this one down. I don't think it's going to happen like that. I think there are too many parts of this building that we probably need to keep or want to keep, like maybe the gyms, maybe the auditorium. And so I think it's going to take a long time to do it. And that's, I think we have to understand that we have to get along and go along and take care of everything until we get to the end of the line, and it may take a while.
Ms. Bond?
I know you had mentioned areas that we needed to focus on, you know, with, as we go through the process, but I wanted to make sure that we talk about the science rooms and labs, because that needs to be focused on, I think, is one of the priorities, because we're going to fall behind. Our students just don't have, and the teachers don't have the right equipment and lighting and whatnot to really keep us in competition with neighboring towns.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, my only comment is, the plain truth is, this feasibility study for the HVAC absolutely says that we're going to trip the 30% rule. That being said, that is a major renovation that's going to cost a lot of money. I think we need to take a very deliberate plan, get that together, communicate it to the town, and figure out what the scope and schedule looks like, so we can communicate that out better to the town. I mean, in no way is it going to be a short-money fix, and if we wait till it's an emergency, it's going to be even more costly fix. So I think putting the effort and time in now is paramount.
Well, yes.
And just to your prior comment, there are, I think, two objective places to look at building condition, and the school committee, every 10 years pays for sort of a comprehensive look at all of our schools, and I think we did that in 2017 last time. So there is sort of a comprehensive look that's, I would say, from outside the district that's objective. Also, when the new MSBA was formed, I believe in 2008, it wasn't immediate, but I think within, God, within seven or eight years, they visited every school in the Commonwealth, and they provided a rating for every school in the Commonwealth. And so, again, I know they visited all of our schools, and I think, again, Burlington rated as a well-maintained school, although, although a school of its age, because there are schools that are, have opened in 1970 or '71 that have been torn down and replaced, and there are schools that are still functioning. So the MSBA does have a rating of every building in the Commonwealth. So I know there are lots of opinions, and I know some of those opinions are driven by certain outcomes that people want to see, but there are, at some point, some objective measures. And then, as Mr. Brooks said, I do think the community, with all that information, then will make the right decision, because many of the decisions that you're making aren't going to benefit any of sort of your children or grandchildren. I mean, these are, I'm assuming the people who had this building constructed, designed, and built, and opened in 1970 weren't necessarily thinking of 2023 and the conversations that we're having now. So I think these are very decades-long processes, as Mrs. Monica was saying, and decisions. And again, we'll provide the most objective information that we can. No one has sort of any sort of agenda here, and it is very expensive, obviously, and it's, I think it's a worthwhile community investment, obviously.
Great. Ms. Bond?
No, I just wanted to also remind everyone, part of the reason we started the whole feasibility study is also so that we can approach MSBA, so that hopefully, they can help us with the high school. That was kind of the goal of it, too, because we've been rejected so many times. And what I keep hearing with Fox Hill is, you know, part of, it's not just the condition of a building, because we take good care of our buildings, which is part of why we don't, but I think maybe we have to focus on what I was just talking about, where are we meeting the educational needs of our high school students? And if we start to see some of that in the study and we start using those words, it might help us out as well. So I, you know, I'm hoping that that's what comes out of the feasibility study.
Okay. Any further comments on this? The next item is summer projects, and I actually wanted to just add a quick thank you on summer school. We have a number of summer school programs going on, and summer not-school programs going on here. And I can't name everybody who's doing it, but I just want to appreciate, because I've heard only really wonderful things from parents and teachers about the programming that we offer to a variety of students for a variety of reasons, including the help that our custodial staff has given in this hot weather, and it's very much appreciated, all of those programs. And I, you know, I don't know if anyone here has a child who's in one of the summer programs? Are they coming home happy, I hope, and good? So yes, Mr. Brooks was shaking his head, so.
Yeah, two attendees, they seem to be having a good time and don't complain too much when they get home, because they're awful tired, so it works out well.
Excellent. So I just wanted to make that little quick update on summer, summer programming. Dr. Conti, did you want to add anything? I know Dr. Chen already thanked people.
No, again, it's, they're fun to visit, and again, I would extend my gratitude, my gratitude as well. So we have very talented educators here. But, oh, please.
And I also had the opportunity to meet with Director John Middleton, who shared with me about, there's a wonderful course, and also.
The theater program.
Yeah, the theater program. Oh, gosh, our students are so lucky. And it's just been, just to watch the students interact and to meet the teachers, that's just really good stuff. So thank you to those, the staff members there as well, too. Thank you.
Great.
So the summer projects on the agenda is, Bob and his crew have about eight or nine weeks to cram about six months' worth of work into, so.
Do it.
So, again, thank you to, again, all the maintenance and custodial staff. How are things going, and what are some of the projects you have going on?
I was going to say, there's going to be nothing left for me to talk about after we've thanked everyone, but I would definitely like to start by thanking the maintenance staff, custodial staff, and the clerical staff, not only for wrapping up the previous fiscal year, but staying here during the summertime and getting the next year started. It's all hard work. Everyone thinks it's the summertime, and nothing really goes on around here in the school department, but it's actually busy, busy, busy in every aspect, from the business office all the way down every hallway. So again, I do want to thank them. One of the big projects, of course, the middle school air conditioning. So as far as the bid work itself, not until the 20th, so two more days on that one. That's when we'll actually know about the company, but as most of you already know, what we did is we put 28 portable air conditioning units in the middle school, plus fans. Now, I know that is a lot of work, and I know it's not the ideal situation. Timing was not perfect for us in this, and the financial impact was obviously larger than expected, forcing us to obviously have to go out to bid. But again, I do need to commend the custodial staff and the maintenance staff, tireless hours, you know, sourcing everything, getting this in, you know, and obviously working with the staff and the students that are over there during the summer programs as well, too. So I want to thank Dr. Chen for her assistance as well, just meeting with staff and to make sure, like, we know when it's hot, it gets hot in those buildings. So our temp really is to take the edge off and make sure that we can provide cooling aspects of the building. So really focusing on the areas that the students and staff are in, mostly in the C corridor, the main office, the nursing stations, and so forth. One that you may not know of, and we're trying to work this out, but DBW is going to be replacing the sidewalks in front of Pine Glen. So that's going to be happening in August. And in order to do that, we needed to remove four large trees, because the stumps are actually coming through, dead trees. Let me stress by saying that they are dead trees, verified dead trees. But the stumps are actually the root of the problem that's causing them to crack, right? So all the sidewalks that are over there.
Right.
The root is the root of the problem.
Bobby, how'd they get dead?
Age. Natural causes.
I think that's beyond his pay grade.
I don't know that we had a study on why they were dead. We just noticed limbs falling constantly, and the maintenance to keep them there became more tiresome, and obviously, the damage that it was causing became a problem. So DBW actually recommended removing them prior to, because they didn't want to put new pavement on top of them. So that is happening. BECC bathrooms, I'm not sure if any of you have driven past it recently, but those are under construction right now. Under the past four weeks, everything from painting to replacing fixtures and so forth, we actually had to move the BECC summer program to the memorial, just because we weren't going to have bathrooms available during the summer. So we were on task to have those completed prior to the start of school. Typical work that happens besides stripping floors, refinishing floors, new carpets in various places, painting hallways, some room conversions. There's a room conversion happening here at the library, the lower library here at the high school. We were taking an overhang space in the lower library and converting that into office space. We're making some way, some room space way up in the IT slash library wing for the alternative ed and the evening academy. And by doing that, we're relocating some staff that's there now into the lower library and creating office space down there. Francis Wyman, we ordered some stair treads, a little bit tough to get those, so they're going to be later in August, but those are on order. Grease trap work at Francis Wyman has begun, so we are expecting that to be done hopefully in the next week. As you remember, the grease trap was no longer in compliance, and it cost us, we had to, in order to meet code, cut the concrete floor, replace a two-inch pipe with a four-inch pipe. So again, that work is ongoing right now. We had the footings poured for the scoreboard at Marshall Simons Middle School last week. So minus tonight's rain and any other warm temperatures, we're waiting for the concrete to cure. We are expected next week for the steel frames that support the actual scoreboard to be installed later on in the week. The company is expecting to be here, I was told Wednesday or Thursday. Myself, the rec department, and field engineer, and the athletic director, we did meet with the engineer company to discuss the Francis Wyman baseball field. So initial site surveys are happening. We're not at the stage yet of drawings, because we're waiting back for the initial site survey, but our next meeting scheduled for early in August, I believe it's August 4th, but I will double-check that, that's when we will discuss more of the drawing structure. Looking at the timeline right now and discussing it with the rec department and with the athletic director, this looks like something to put out to bid late in October, November, with an anticipation of install for March, April, May. Potentially, if we were to rush it, we could look at maybe getting something done in October, November, December. Really kind of tough to grow grass in that area, but depending on how early. So we're going to look at it in multiple ways, if, but I don't believe rushing it is probably the best idea, or more likely to happen, so I'm guessing more in an April timeframe. And then, let me see, I'm trying to think what else I missed on this.
Maybe you didn't miss anything. That was a long list.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to go quickly through them. But yeah, that's a lot right there. So again, thank you to that staff, maintenance, clerical, and the custodial staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I missed it. The Pine Glen.
I missed it, the Pine Glen instructional space, did you hit on that?
I did not hit on that. So Pine Glen instructional space has been paused for summer work right now, so we can focus on the space at the high school. Once that's complete, then we're going to move our focus over to that.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Moran, why don't you join us at the, turn the mic on, and I was going to ask you if you had anything to say before we were done, too.
Just a quick question, the software work at Pine Glen, has that begun?
It has not begun yet. That is also something, I don't want to say the word paused, but we're going to bid that out, so we'll know more about that in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the summer projects or comments? Mr. Moran, do you have any, we, you weren't here when we got to the item on the agenda of Ways and Means, and if you have any thing you wanted to comment or add from Ways and Means, please take this time now.
Sure. I'm sorry, I had a conflict with another meeting. I just had one request, is if we could see the end-of-the-year cafeteria results from the Whitsons, assuming the operational ship of the cafeteria, it would be great to see how the numbers matched up with what was projected back in February. In terms of Ways and Means, from an operational budget perspective, there's not been anything going on at this time of the year. The annual, the annual meeting that we have to just do the line-item transfers between budgets happened, but that didn't impact schools, so it's quiet time with respect to the operational budget side. Obviously, it's a lot noisier on the new school building side, but others are covering that. Thanks.
Yes, and just before you leave, I mean, Dr. Conti, we, it takes a little while to wrap up the fiscal year, so that's why there was no financial report tonight. And in terms of the numbers that Mr. Moran is talking to, would he just speak directly with Nicole, or would we get back to him? What would you like to do?
Yeah, I can talk to Nicole, I'm sure she can put it together. She's working on not only closing out, but also, we're still hiring, so she's also building the, sort of, where people are and who they're getting, you know.
Did you have a comment, Nicole?
I was just going to mention that I could get those to Steve either at the next meeting or offline.
That's, that's fine, I know that. Into the fiscal year is, you know, you're wrapping up a bunch of things. I just wanted to see how we lined up with projections and just add, ask for the request.
Okay.
No, of course, that's important, too. I'll get those over to you.
Thanks.
Great. Okay, Ms. Monaco?
Nicole, would you send them to all of us, please?
I can do that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for taking me out of order.
Sure. Thank you for coming. Dr. Conti, is there anything else that you have for us tonight? Is there any other business to come before the body tonight? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Weren't fast enough, huh?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.